They didn't meet the demo.
No, no, this is not until spring.
Oh, not until spring.
It was the House Bill six. The referendum didn't mean it.
Right. I heard something.
I call that.
Well, with Appleweight.
Anybody else?
Okay, we're gonna start today. My guess is.
I have two things. There's gonna, any of you who are interested in trying to stop the mass incarceration thing, there's gonna be a training on November 7th. I put flyers over there about disbanding the community to prison pipeline. I'm gonna go. And I've been going to the meetings on Monday night for Tracy Hunter. And I have, if any of you like to chip in to help, she owes like $35,000 in court costs. And I think they're gonna violate, they wanna violate her probation, Senator Prisen, if she doesn't make all these payments. So if you wanna contribute, I have envelopes.
We'd like to start off today first with Eve Bolton talking about the school levy. This is something that's near and dear to my heart. Renew 12. I've been working on this for the past several months with the Cincinnati Federation of Teachers and with the superintendent's office. We're together every Saturday over at the poster workers on Tennessee Avenue organizing, getting signs out. And it's really important, but there are a couple pushback items. And so Eve's gonna speak to you about the school levy.
Great, thank you. Thanks for inviting me. It's good to see everyone. We have our president of our board here, and I think I got this task because I'm currently finance chair. So appreciate the opportunity to talk a little bit about this. As some of you already know, and it's been shared with you a number of times, this is a renewal levy. It has been renewed three times previously for a period of five years each time. And this renewal levy is for $65 million annually for our general fund. And that represents a little bit more, little bit more than 10% of our entire general fund this year. And the reality is, it is terribly essential and required and has been used, as you know, for our general fund for general upper ads. It would be devastating to have it fail for the first time in four times. But there are several conditions that are making it much more perhaps difficult and worrisome to get this one passed, even though it's a renewal and won't raise taxes, which we try to say in the same breath every chance we get. Here's one of the reasons that it's a concern. This year, as you well know, city council in the city of Cincinnati is not up. They've changed their terms. They have the charter changed again. And so we inside the city really have the judicial, municipal judicial races, and we have a number of other levies, including the one that deals with transportation. But we do not have the kind of turnout that is going to be or would be and has been created as a result of a mayor race or a city council race. That's troublesome because in the city of Cincinnati, very much so, it's our families, if you will, that pass this levy. There's over 200 and some precincts, 240, I guess, precincts in the district. And a little bit less than 200 of them are in the city proper. And in the city proper, in about two-thirds of the city, we do very well. In a third of the city, mostly where I grew up, way out there on Santa Rosa Park in the west side, we were lucky to have our own. But it's in the outlined 40 or so precincts that are outside the city, Amberly, Chiviet, parts of, let's say Springfield Township, Longview Township, Golf Manor, those, a little bit more than 40 precincts usually as a body, largely due to Dream Township, don't pass our levies. So, but they have their regular elections this year, unlike Cincinnati not having it. So that's a concern. Those numbers will be pumped up. We also have seen proof through the levy effort regarding turnout that the numbers are reading kind of, I shouldn't say, the levels are reading very low. So our worries in the beginning are beginning to kind of manifest themselves. So that's number one. But probably substantively, the issue that is of greater concern and has caused more discussion than usual about a renewal from CPS is that the board determined after, I would say, Carolyn, I would say at least eight months review, if we include especially our community audit committees reflections and advice, decided to have the levy be for the same amount of dollars, but not for five years, but instead for 10 years. And as you know, in southwestern Ohio, unlike the rest of the state particularly, people like the accountability that the emergency levies or what have you being renewed every five years gives them that opportunity. There are reasons that we went to 10 years. First, our community audit committee asked us to make it a continuing levy, meaning it would never come back to the voters. That is more and more done throughout the state with some degree of success, interestingly enough. We spent a lot of time thinking about how good that would be. Our treasurer liked it, our people who run the levy campaigns liked it, and it made great sense for us financially down the road. But we also knew that it would cause, maybe it was a bridge too far. So what we came up with and the reason we did, we came up with a 10-year extension. So we voted on a 10-years. The reason we did it was not just because of levy fatigue. It was not just because it would be more convenient for all of us. The reason we did it is that it would help our bond rating. To have that levy last for 10 years, have that guaranteed income for an additional five years. The bond rating is critical in any year, but in the next three years of this strategic plan, that bond rating is particularly critical because we're going to have to go out and borrow money for the growth that the market is demanding of us. We are opening schools. We're not closing schools. People are coming to us. They're not leaving. The charter numbers are dwindling, going down, and the share of the market in the charters that the charters have is going down. The parochial and private numbers are flat. People are coming, and guess what? You all know best than anybody, if you love public education, our doors are open and they don't get closed. So this bond rating would be helpful. Plus, there are other things that we can do regarding that $65 million. It would always be for operations. But if we also have that guarantee of operations, there are different sorts of bonds and loans that we can go for at very reasonable rates because we have that sustainability, that predictability of that revenue. So there are those reasons why we decided to try, even in a difficult loan turnout year like this, for the sake of our strategic plan, for the sake of the growth, for the sake of the sustainability of our financial house and its health, we decided to do that. Finally, I would add, as you know, we do levy, 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 renewal, renewal, renewal. We don't like it any more than the taxpayers do. But I will tell you, between the issues of abatement, which is very controversial, the issue of the property taxes going up significantly post preschool promise, and also the valuations going up because we are in a bit of a renaissance in our communities, there is a developing tax revolt, property tax revolt, even among the most moderate, even lukewarm among us. And the reality is, that also is a concern of ours regarding the possibility, as it was required by law, to have as many levies as we need. And the reality is, too, we probably would need eventually a new money levy, but that new money levy is really suspect from a standpoint of that developing property tax revolt. The other piece of that abatement issue is that a lot of people are feeling like they're paying their taxes and other people aren't.
Right.
And it's become a class war over property taxes. I've been fortunate enough to serve on the property tax work group that is led by Vice Mayor Smithman. And the reality is, the city is thinking of continuing as much of the abatement as possible, but also saying we have to find ways to preserve our neighborhoods because people in legacy homes are being thrown out. It's not just gentrification, it's just the rising property tax itself and making it difficult to stay. Well, one of the solutions is that people will pay fewer taxes. Well, the school district and the 13 or 14 other people that are dependent upon property taxes or organizations, be it the zoo or mental health or disabled or whoever, has to start to figure out revenue is very, very fluid and not necessarily a big gush of revenue at any time in the near future. So there are those reasons why we went to the 10-year. I hope, I hope, Katie, that that helps that issue of explaining, should I ask for questions or is that, am I semi-clear?
Good.
Yeah, I'm happy with semi at this point in time. Any questions about anything, but particularly about this levy, because I know you'll get to hear from our president soon.
I'm wondering if we're making any progress in stopping this tax abatement stuff. Could we sue them or something? And also, the state has been constitutional challenge about funding schools in a different way, you know, like through the general fund or something like that. Those would help a lot if we could make some progress in those two areas. Any hope?
There's some hope on the way to fund schools and that there was some hope, a glimmer part of the Cup report as it was, that thought it might get entered into the biennial budget from the governor. A lot of discussion in Columbus, and they think that somewhere down near road, not the far, far road, there will be some major adjustments. Often, the major adjustments don't help us as much as they may help others. But there is at least serious dialogue about trying to change the source of revenue and the structure of revenue. I wouldn't hold my breath, but there is at least dialogue. As for the abatement, we took action again last night. As many of you know, the abatement agreement with the district and the city is over in December 31st. And we have, in public, created a resolution and created our position on the negotiations. Our people have said what it will take to make us whole, so that we do not have our money that we need so desperately not come to us, not come to the need of our students. The reality is that the city has had been hauled, even our most recent letter was really still belaboring something about state funding, and that somehow we all benefited from having abatement and that wonderful state funding. So they're kind of in a different orbit than us, but what we resolved last night, and Carol will be able to talk a little bit more about it, is that we've been doing these letters back and forth. We've had our negotiations team meet with them, I think, three times to no avail. And we have reached the point that we need to go to council rather than necessarily the administration or necessarily the mayor. We're not getting any action through them. So body to body, so to speak, because ultimately, those are the folks that we believe have the decision. But they, just like they were about frankly, a to raise it, the FC issue, council so far is laid back on the abatement piece, and we're out there doing what we can do. So I'm not that hopeful. We have also asked the administration to brief us too as to what happens if we don't get one. But I think the consensus on the board, at least the majority of the board, would prefer to have an agreement as long as it makes it whole. But there is not a majority on the board that we will take a bad deal just to take a deal, which I think is what they're trying to get us to do. The other thing, yeah, no concession. The other, the other piece of that is that, you know, in the original, there was the additional $5 million because of the two stadiums on the riverfront. There was also, they would pay for our resource officers, they would pay for our school nurses. Thank you, Bobby Stern, God bless her. She needs a statue too, I'll tell you, at this rate. I mean, just in my lifetime, those two women, whether it's Marion or Bobby, they, boy, do we miss them. I mean, I don't want to be too sexist, but you guys gotta get these guys picking at high marks. They're out of trouble. But the piece of it is that the public school nurses are no longer paid for by the city, they're paid for by us. They were gonna be paying for the crossing guards. They stopped doing that several, many years ago now, eight or nine years ago. We're paying for it, but they are still employees at the city. So all of the extra kind of stuff that was part of that deal has long gone, except for paying for our resource officers, thank God. But at least, I'm 68 years old, and when I was in high school, we had Cincinnati police officers in our high school. So that's at least a tradition. I think we're the second city to do that. But I'm not that hopeful about the abatement, and I think it's also confusing, as I said, the levy discussion. Because we also heard last night from some board members, and I think they were right, that if somehow we say uncle on this, people are gonna wonder, well, then don't come to us asking for more tax dollars. So the reality for us is that almost everywhere we turn, we are put in a position that we're gonna have to stand strong, and we're gonna have to ask people to go and petition and bother and advocate to city council on behalf of the schools, on behalf of other agencies and entities that depend upon those sorts of taxes.
Do we have any champions on city council for what you wanna do?
Not really.
Do we have any champions on city council to help the schools?
I've had, I've had six councilmen, councilpersons, I should say, say to me, we're with you. But so, that's right, yes.
I think, to add to that, that's a, that's a great question. Part of the issue is, part of the issue is, there's no clear understanding of who we're supposed to engage in this conversation. We believe that there are council members who, if they had the right information, such as we've been trying to communicate to the administration, that they would really think it through a little differently than Patrick DeHane. So I'm just calling his name now, because he doesn't get it at all, and I think he's a huge barrier to what we need, to how we need to inform city council. I do believe that there are people, council members, who would definitely understand it, which is why we took the, that we're taking the approach that we decided on last night, which is to go directly to them, give them the information, engage with them, show up in their meeting and deliver the message so that they have a better understanding. But it's, it's really been, you know, you know, Mayor Cranley does not make the decision. Now, he's been one of the ones who have been the back and forth letter thing, and then Patrick DeHane, who still is stuck on the school, the formula, the state formula. He just doesn't get the numbers at all. So, yeah, we're working on that, that piece.
And I would add to what Carolyn said, is that, you know, the board can do what we can do, but what actually matters is if the community gets mad as hell about this agreement not being done and the schools and all the other folks not getting what is due them. City council will listen to people, voters, advocates, raising hell, more than they're gonna listen to their down the, you know, up the hill colleagues on the school board. But we're gonna do our best, and we've been doing our best, but we really need people to put the pressure on city council to get this deal done that makes the district whole and the children get the tax revenue that is due them, so that we do not have to deal with this ever increasing entity out here called a tax revolt.
Just wanna let you know, there are many members in this group that are part of the Cincinnati Educational Justice Coalition. And so we have been working on this tax abatement issue for almost five years now, trying to do the research, trying to sit down with people to get the data. And getting the data, I mean, Sue Magnin was working at city council, at the, at the city office, and there was nobody knew anything about what was doing. They submit their paperwork, and there's no follow-up. And then they're given abatement after abatement after abatement. So we need to uncover, and so in your resolution that you have about what you want to do, you've got all the pieces in there that count, but the accountability is one of the biggest things. And we also need to do something about the residential tax abatements, because that is where I think, that's where the revolt's gonna come in. When I have all of my neighbors on my street of Walker Street have tax abatements, but I'm paying their taxes. It really bothers me a whole lot. And they've got kids in the schools, and they're paying nothing for the kids to go to school. That's what gets aggravated, but I would never vote against a school levy.
Mention about the meetings, so people know.
Yes, we meet the second Tuesday, second Thursday of the month at, right now, we're meeting in Cincinnati Federation of Teachers office, but we, sometimes we meet at the Clifton Library. And this is a group of people from all over southwest Ohio, and we are organizing, this is still a very big issue ours, we will not let it go, and we have organized to start speaking at council meetings. We spoke at council meetings numerous times. We've had pledges from Greg Landsman and Tom Idenard that were to get a group together to sit down with us, didn't happen. So I don't know how many of them are being scammed by our mayor. I really think our mayor's behind the whole thing. I think he wants it to expire, and then he just wants to put it to the school board. And I think we just have to hold really strong. And I think the voters want you to hold really strong. So, thank you.
Did you mention the time?
We meet 6 o'clock, 6 till 7:30. Pardon?
It's in the newsletter.
It's in the newsletter, right.
Any other?
We need proof of the pockets lead line for the developers.
Check out the campaign finances.
Well, as I said last week, now that Cincinnati citizens pass that campaign.
LLCs.
LLCs can no longer, can do that, so we can now have a very.
Hide money where it's really coming.
Yeah, they can't hide the money anymore. We can see exactly which developers are putting what in the hands of whom. Okay, Carolyn, you wanna take over?
Thank you everyone. I have a luncheon that I need to go to. One of my dear friends is one of the Inquirer Women of the Year, and she and I go back to my Wyoming days, when she was the president of the school board and I was the president of teachers here. So we have a great relationship.
I wrote a summary of things. Anything else, she's in for a resume here.
Sure.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Oftentimes, Ms. Bolton is elected to do the presentation on the tax levy because she so eloquently articulates the position of the board. But, but I, you know, the tax levy is a crucial, very crucial issue for us. And if it doesn't pass, then all of the progress that the district has made, irregardless of the D, all the progress that we've made goes for naught. So, so please, and I know, you know, the dem clubs have been, I've been very, very, very impressed with how all the dem clubs in the city have mobilized around the issues that, that support the district and other issues. And I'm very appreciative of that, and I know you all are quite knowledgeable of what's going on. So anyway, again, my name is Carolyn Jones. I'm the current president of the board. I have been president now for two years. Running for reelection, this is my, I am completing my first term on this board. However, I lived outside of the district in North College Hill for 22 years, and I served on that board for two terms, so eight years. I actually left, I was born and raised in Cincinnati. I'm a proud product of Cincinnati public. I have two kids. My kids are 14 years apart. So by the time, by the time my son graduated, fortunately, he was able to go to Waller Hills and did well. But by the time my daughter became school age, our magnet programs were going full force, and I was denied all three of my choices. And at the time, my neighborhood school was not up to par. So I made a decision as a parent to go where I felt like she would have the best opportunity, which is why I left the city. But Cincinnati is my home. Once I became an empty nester, when she moved out, got married and all that, I moved back into the city and immediately got into the race. I moved back in January 2015, jumped right in the school board race in July of that year, and got, and was fortunate enough to be able to get a seat. I am a person who believes in working with a focus on what works well in the district, not what our deficits are. Because as a board member and involved in the day-to-day sort of oversight of things, we know what the issues are. And one of the reasons why folks like me come to work in roles like this is because we wanna make a difference and because we wanna impact change. So we're not so naive as to believe that that D that people see on the report card isn't real, because the D is the perception, and that perception is reality. But I'm here to tell you that this district, over the past number of years, has progressed steadily in almost every indicator that the state report card outlines. But that's not what you hear on the news. I remember when the state report card came out in September. I was at home after a long day of campaigning. I came home and I plopped on the couch, turned on the news, CPS gets a D. And I sat there with my mouth open, number one, because I was shocked, because I didn't anticipate a D. Based on what I know, that we're doing well, I didn't anticipate a D. But I was very, very disappointed. However, when we got the details, it brightened my day because I could see progress in all of those measures and indicators that the state places on us. So when I'm out talking to folks about CPS, you will always hear me talk about what we do well. The things that make this district one destination CPS, as Ms. Bolton talked about, people wanna come to our district. So when we're talking about the city tax abatement, we believe that people are coming to the city because they wanna come to the good schools that we have. That's part of it. And so we believe that in many instances, we drive economic development. You tell me, you know, if folks are relocating into the city of Cincinnati and they are family, that's one of the first things they look for, is the educational system. So they, they want good schools. And we believe that we've factored into that significantly. So the, the things that we have done well, and I didn't bring my cheat sheet, but I'll just throw out a few of these stats. Our graduation rate has seen steady progress over the last eight or so years, steady. Is it, is it where we want it to be? No. We want 100% graduation. But it used to be at 50%. We're now at about 78%. We're now at about 78%. Now, when you see that 78%, you say, oh, we're failing our kids. Yeah, let's acknowledge that that's not the number that we want. But it doesn't mean we're failing our kids. Steady progress is where we want. And we anticipate that it'll be better next year. Okay, last year, 98% of our third graders passed the third grade reading test. Now, if you all know anything about the third grade reading guarantee, they retain kids in the third grade, that's according to state law. They retain them if they don't pass that exam. There's also research that says that's when the school prison pipeline is noticed, third grade. Personal experience, I have my oldest great-grandson, and yes, I have two great-grandsons. I am that old. Third grader, struggling with reading. Last year, we knew as a family what he was dealing with. And he was told, basically the family was told, well, if he doesn't pass his third grade reading guarantee, he's gonna be retained. I refuse, as a grandparent, to allow that to happen. Part of my issue with that is, we weren't informed soon enough of his struggles. That was number one. And I took issue with that as a grandparent, not as a board member, remember, I had to separate my ass. But this is indicative of some of the things that I see as needing to change for families. And what we went through as a family, it's pretty, I don't want to say pretty typical, but it does happen that sometime kids fall through the cracks. And we need to be able to help parents better understand how to navigate the system so that they can meet their child's needs. Okay, so, so parent and family engagement is huge. Okay, so 98% of the kids passed third guarantee. We had like 18 schools improve their overall grade. We have a number of schools that have received As on the report card for multiple years. Evansville Academy. What is the other school? I'm trying to think, I can't off the top of my head. There's another school that, Taff Elementary, you know, Taff sits a little pocket down that people never know that is a Cincinnati public school. They received an A for two years. So the growth and the progress that we are seeing in the schools is happening as a result of Vision 2020. Do you all know what Vision 2020 is? Vision 2020 is, are the strategic initiatives that were implemented five years ago, almost five years ago, to address the achievement gap between populations and sub-populations of students. We all know, the data says, there's huge disparities in race, ethnic groups, special ed, all of those English language learners. Huge disparities. When our current superintendent was deputy superintendent, working under Mary Ronan, she developed the Vision 2020 By Tomorrow Plan. It was intended and designed to target our neighborhood schools, which were showing where the gaps were. In our neighborhood schools. And it's been almost five years, we're in the last year of Vision 2020 implementation. And that has proven to be successful. And it is where we closed the achievement gap this year. We went from an F to a B. Over time, but the most significant changes within the past year. So, why would we dwell on that D? I don't even, I try to block it out of my head, but I've been approached by community members who are very upset about the D. And I always say, yes, we got a D. But let me tell you about that D. Because you really have to look a little deeper. Now, again, and I'm gonna keep saying it, I acknowledge that that's the reality that we live with. So, how, where do I fit in in this, and why am I asking you for your support? I bring a level of work and a skill set that, that came from my work, my actual professional career, where I worked as a systems level planner. I spent 40 years as a mental health professional. The last 28 years, I worked at the Hamilton County Mental Health and Recovery Services Board, where I provided oversight of our county system for public mental health services. I had the opportunity to work with cross-systems, child welfare, juvenile justice, adult justice, of the schools. I was part of the implementation of Mind Peace with Susan Shelton when it was first being brought to the schools. So I do have a level of experience in knowing how to work across systems. I also very familiar in policy development and direction, and have a good sense of what it takes to govern. But more importantly, my experience as a parent, grandparent, great-grandparent, all feed into that. I want kids, I want our kids to have the same wonderful educational experiences that I had. And even though I'm older, and in this time, the landscape is different for our kids. There are many, many more challenges in terms of the educational process for our kids. They're dealing with trauma, they're dealing with all the stuff that happens out here. We have in some situations where parents aren't involved with the schools for whatever reason. They may have had negative experiences. But the landscape is different, but kids and families want the same quality education that I received when I was graduating from Hughes High School. And that's my goal, is to do whatever I can to make sure that they have a positive experience, that, to make sure that they are prepared for life, either enrolling in college, enlisting in the military, or being employed in their field of choice. So I'm hoping to be able to continue to impact the systems in a positive way. Now, as I've been going out talking to groups, I always say, pay attention to your candidates. Because not everybody who's campaigning out there has the best interest of the kids at heart. Okay? And I'm gonna say something because my friend Marlena back here is running for school board. And I have so much respect for her. She didn't get endorsed by the Dem Party, but I'm gonna tell you something about her. She works hard, she cares about our kids, she has a daughter in the schools, she cares about all our kids. This lady comes to almost every board meeting, she comes, participates on our committees. She participates and advocates, and I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge her, even though she's not supported. If she wins, I'm gonna support her. Because for me, it's not about competition, it's not about that. Because you all probably have pretty much decided who you're gonna vote for, I think, I don't know. But, I have to say that because she stands apart from some of the other folks that we have running on this, in this camp, in this election. So I will caution you, just please be conscientious, get to know the folks. If you can come, I don't know, we have one more huge forum, Marlena? The 29th, Gabriel's place?
In Everly Village.
Everly Village. Come to the forums, they will speak for themselves. We don't have to say who they are or anything. But please know who you're putting in there. There are folks on there who have, who do not have the interest of the kids. And if you don't have an interest in the kids, and you don't have an interest in helping move the district forward, you're not good enough, in my opinion, to serve on the school board. School board, a lot of people think we're the sort of low man on the totem pole, uh-uh. The school board politic is huge, and it's important, and we need to have the best people for the job. And given that, I'll say thank you. And I appreciate your support, and I'm open to any questions. Whoa.
Speaking about candidates, somebody came to my door just yesterday and wanted to speak to me about Ben Lindy who's running for the school board. And we ended up having quite the discussion about, in particular, Teach for America, which for those who may not know, he works in the administration for that. And I would like some clarification. And my hope is that you being president for the last two years, you might either A, know the answers, or B, be able to direct me to where I can get these answers.
Okay.
Okay. Does any percent of the general fund which Ms. Bolton was referring to before go for Teach for America program?
Okay, in Cincinnati public school, we had an agreement with our collective bargaining unit to contract, up until this year, we had an agreement that would allow the district to hire a small percentage of Teach for America folks. Reason being, we were dealing with shortages, teacher shortages. We didn't have a market for them. So there is, in the language of that, and I can't speak to it off the top of my head, in the language of that, the numbers of hires that we could actually bring on board was limited. And I do believe it comes out of the general fund, I would have to check that out just to make sure which fund, but I do believe that's where it came from.
Okay.
However, however, CFT just recently passed a resolution that said they will not support that in their contract. Now, I will have to say, we don't know where that's going to lead us. We, collective bargaining starts either later this year or earlier next year.
December 1st.
December 1st, thank you. We don't know what's gonna happen in terms of negotiation around that. So, but they've taken a pretty strong position.
Thank you very much, that answered that question.
Okay.
And the next one, I'm kind of doubting, it would be wonderful if you knew it, but if you don't, maybe you can direct me. I have three questions I'd like to understand. Number one, the percentage of Teach for America recipients actually using that long-term money that they get at the end to go on and get their accreditation to teach in public schools, compared to the percentage who do not use that money to get accreditation and go on to teach in charter schools, in private schools, because it'll be an easier route.
Okay.
And, three, what percentage just drops teaching completely, doesn't do anything with it at all? Is there any data on what happens?
Yes, we haven't, I will bring it to you. I have.
There we go.
Thank you, and I knew there was data, but I can't answer it directly because I don't have it up here.
Okay.
Oh. No, because Katie's gonna bring it next to you.
All right, I can give you some right now.
Sue has some of it too, we've all looked at it.
I have two questions, well, it's sort of suggestions, I guess. One, I heard on the radio about the teenage addicts who've recovered, but when they go back into the same system, then they fall back and have addiction again. And one of my thoughts was, if they had a special school or a special place where all the kids could go and be supported, because they can go to private schools like that, but then they have to pay a whole lot of money. But along with that, I have a grandson who's dyslexic, and I've read that at least 10% of the population is dyslexic. And I'm thinking if we have, what, 35, 40,000 students now?
You mean the CPS?
Yes.
Probably 36,500.
Right, so we're looking at 10% of that having reading issues, that maybe we could have our own Springer School to... Right, because it's, Springer's expensive, and if it's 10%, that's a lot. But anyway, those are two things maybe you can take back to the board to talk about.
Yeah, that's one of the things about campaigning, is that you hear all these questions and, that you don't have answers for, and lots of recommendations and whatever. And I do, I generally will say, I'm not gonna make promises, but I will commit to documenting and just trying to find out what's available. I know that within our student services department, there are, we tried, we had a report on this last night. We really look at each child's individual needs and try to wrap services around based on what they need. So I'm fairly certain that if they've been identified as having some level of limitation or challenge, that, that, you know, they probably are receiving some level of services that's for us.
Doane School is for kids in recovery.
Who, what school?
DOH.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and my granddaughter that's dyslexic got excellent help at North Abundale Montessori.
Great, okay.
And I think that's a really, that inclusion is such a good model.
Okay.
Getting my granddaughter through the system qualified with.
Yes, now that I've heard and that I am aware of. As somebody who has, is experiencing it now, it is hard to navigate the time that it takes to even get folks assessed and identified so that they can receive the support, is one of those challenges that the district has.
And to pay for the tuition.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, back to the Orin Gillingham, I mean, back to the dyslexic, there is a way of teaching very fanatic called Orin Gillingham. And the Cincinnati Public Schools has been very, very supportive of that program.
Good.
Getting many teachers trained.
Great, sounds good. You all have more information about it than I do. Yes.
When it comes to the Teach for America, I don't have exact percentages because my brain doesn't hold numbers very well, but the majority of Teach for America recipients go into the charter schools. And that's the main, and Teach for America and the charter schools are joined at the hip because they are supported by the same money.
Yes.
They won't admit that, but really, what they do is, they de-professionalize this education. And the goal ultimately is privatization of public schools. And this is, this is a real dark, like, situation that, I find it just extremely dangerous and it just infuriates me, the way that they disrespect the profession of education. They want to put people into the classroom with three, with five weeks of summer school training. And then, the Walton Foundation has given them so much money to pay for these recruits to go, you know, they're, they get a signing bonus, the recruits get a signing bonus from the Walton Foundation, depending on whether they go to a charter school or a public school. It's a $5,000 or $6,000 bonus just to sign up. Teachers who are fully trained, who have master's degree in education, who've made a commitment to this for their career, don't get any sign-in bonus. But somebody coming out of college with, you know, a degree in concrete can get a signing bonus to go teach at a public school after five weeks of educational training. It's just a complete insult, and I would be, I would be harassing everybody I know if I, if you guys don't sign that agreement with CFT not to hire Teach for America, you know, to get that out of the contract, because there's no place for those people in public education. And the suggestion I have is put the energy into a school, you know, a- a, you know, a, um, a, you know, a choice school in the system for high school students who might be interested in education. Just like you're trying to get a program to, uh, to prepare, uh, first responders, you know, firefighters and police officers. There's a need for more African-American educators and it would be very money well spent that would, you know, pay off in spades if you could do a program in high school to get people interested in education like you're trying to do with the first responders. Well, is there any movement in that? Is there a plan for that?
For the first responders?
No, for the, for the teachers.
For the teachers.
Oh, for the teachers.
It's a Hughes.
I'm sorry?
It's a Hughes. We, it's small.
It, it is small, but, but, um, I, I can't tell you exactly what that program looks like. I mean, I'm not in the day-to-day work of it, but I think your point about, um, the difference in the level of education licensure and certification are the crux of the issue. It's not that these aren't good people or their hearts aren't in the right place. It has to do with the level of education, professionalism, certification. So the, the point is well taken, and I think most of the people, most of the candidates who are running for school board, um, do not support privatization. So I want to be clear about that, most of them. We might have one or two that do, okay? Now, I also want to say...
Finland B.
Okay. I also want to say...
At a couch.
Okay, I also want to say in, in defense of the district, okay? We're looking, we see all the national research around Teach for America and privatization. We read it, we understand it. In Cincinnati Public, the small cohort of Teach for America people have actually done well. Now, some of them have even risen to the level of principal.
How many are you talking about?
I, in terms of numbers, it's real small. I, I don't know the actual number, but it's really small.
Yeah.
But nevertheless, huge issues. And I know that it's going to be part of the collective bargaining discussion. So I, you know, yeah. Um, this lady had a question, you heard her and then the best.
Oh, first of all, thanks for supporting Morlan.
Hang on here. Let's just set the record straight, for-profit schools are unethical.
They are. Thanks for supporting Morlan, I have a question. I, and this concerns, yes, you said that lots of neighborhoods have having an influx of young people with young parents, with children moving in. I live in one of the neighborhoods that you mentioned, okay? That is not in the city of Cincinnati. At our council meeting, uh, representative that went to the last board meeting spoke about the overcrowding of our school and how it was not addressed. I actually had, because I walk with my neighbor who is a two-year-old, who is, like a lot of young parents, thinking of homeschooling their child. And when she hears about the overcrowding of this public schools, and I am a supporter of public schools, you know, it scares her. She's got a baby.
Yes.
You know, as a parent, how do we address that? And how do we address all the parents moving in to the city? Or not the city, but certain areas, Cincinnati Public School area? And yet they are selecting to keep their children out of public schools because of that reason.
Okay, so let me say it this way. Growth and enrollment is a good thing and a bad thing. What we have to do is find that balance. We want kids to come into the school. We acknowledge and know and are working on a growth plan. So, uh, growth is one of the five priority areas of our strategic plan that was passed earlier this year, high priority. And we're having extensive planning efforts. Our board work session is coming up and the superintendent and her leadership team are about to, uh, embark on their own sort of implementation strategy for how we address the overcrowding. And, but we have to, and see, what, what we say to folks, which is the truth, you know, because, and I speak about like Hyde Park, who, Hyde Park is always advocating for what they want and what they need. And they come to the board meetings faithfully and respectfully and they verbalize it. But we have that issue all across the district, so we have to look at it from a broader level than just one or two schools. It is a problem that we have across the district. And I'm not gonna say we're growing too fast, because there are schools that are under capacity. So there are quite a few schools that are under capacity. We have to figure out strategies where we can achieve balance all across the geographic areas. So some of you may have heard about the boundary discussion. And so that's part of, um, our thinking in terms of how we move forward to address the issues of overcrowding, is to think about the boundary lines. Now, I don't want to say, because we're not there yet, I can't speak specifically to what that would look like, but a reality of what may have to happen is we may have to redraw the boundary lines. That's controversial. But the reality also is, we can't build five, six new schools. We may be able to, you know, with tax money dollars, however, we may have to consider doing new schools similarly to what we did on the West Side. It's all, all of that are recommendations for consideration. So we, I get that.
Thanks, I'm glad you get, one more thing.
Okay.
And I was on the LCMC for the school.
Yeah.
And this was an issue, and it was probably five years ago, that it was overcrowded then.
Yes.
And, and values, he did mention, and it's, it's still an issue.
Let me tell you, when, um, I wasn't around when the FMP project, the Facilities Master's Plan was implemented, but you know, the amount of money that we, that the district received from the state was based on the state's projections of how many students would be enrolled in CPS. They projected twenty-eight thousand. So our buildings were built to accommodate twenty-eight thousand. We have thirty-six, five. Now, we revamped some schools and of course, we purchased, uh, the school and then we developed cans. That's eased it some, but it does not fully address it. So, yeah, you're absolutely right.
Yeah. Uh, this is a very broad question, what do you think education is for? The reason I ask this is that an older view saw the key goal as creating participating citizens. There's more and more capitalist pressure that sees, let's get rid of foreign languages, let's get rid of humanities, um, let's just train people on computers and so forth. I mean, I was very lucky, I, in fifth grade, I read poems by Keats that stuck in my head. Um, and I, I think this is one of the real problems of contemporary education is this pressure for the narrow conception of fitting into today's economy. Instead of, what I think students really need to do is how to teach themselves to adjust to the changes that are definitely gonna happen.
Yes, I, I, I think the, the way I would address that is to say, we really have to look at the needs for the whole child. Um, and it includes being exposed to a broader range of things that help prepare them when they graduate. Now, we also have to think ahead of the game in terms of creating or developing curriculums that are gonna help support their success. So this is the digital age, right? So as many of our kids as we can help prepare for the digital age, because that's, that's what's going on now in our, in our rural society, is electronics, digital, all that kind of stuff. We try to do that, but we made a firm commitment to keep humanities, the arts, athletics, and all of that as part of our curriculum. And as a matter of fact, we added to it. So I agree with you. It has to be a whole package. I think what makes the difference now is that we're also, in many ways, parenting kids. We're parenting. We have all these support services. We have over six hundred community partners in our building to support the basic needs of our kids. Ask yourself why? And I have got, I'm gonna be honest, I have gotten into some heated discussions with people in the community who walk up to me and say, "The school's not doing anything about guns." The schools? I can't, in general, they don't bring guns to school. They have a walkthrough detector, so in general, they don't. So the things that are impacting how schools operate are happening in our communities. So focusing on expanding curriculum, making sure they get those basics, the things that you and I thrived on, we have them in the schools. But we really are focused on what it takes to prepare them for life beyond graduation. And so career, people, some people say vocational, but career education, working to make sure that kids have the choices that they want and they are focused on those choices through their, uh, educational, uh, time in the, in the schools. And, um, helping them to move beyond that is what we're really looking for. So it's really educating and working with the whole child. And that oftentimes means finding better ways to engage the parents. Because parents, and I'm saying this, yes, I'm saying it, you can say I said, sometimes we have situations where parents are sending their kids to school to be parented. And, um, that's not what education was set up for, but it's the hand we were dealt, so we do our best to provide a holistic approach to education. Yes, ma'am?
I think we have one last question. I'll leave it to Albert.
One, two, no, you go ahead.
Okay, this one's a quickie, you can probably answer real quick. You spoke about the, um, teacher deficit and I was wondering whether here in Cincinnati Public School, whether we have a program that's similar out in Arizona, they have a teacher deficit as well. And one of my best friends who was certified in Michigan, did the proper thing, became a properly certified teacher, she was allowed to begin teaching immediately in Arizona with the proviso that she would meet their certification needs within, I think, two years. But she was able to begin filling their teaching need immediately, et cetera. And of course, that's a good thing. So I was wondering, do we have something similar in place here?
Yes, we do, yes.
Right, there's my best friend.
Uh, there, there are some things that they must have coming in the door. But I think there's lots of, uh, I want to say, I have to say this because it's relevant to your question. Our superintendent is a visionary. She's thinking way ahead of the game. And, and she's really developed some, some really innovative strategies around talent development. And, um, uh, the district, the human resources and our talent development people are really working externally to try to pull in qualified people that can be groomed.
Right.
You, you know what I'm saying? And so, yeah, there are certain provisions made around that and we have teacher incentives. So that if, say if a, a teacher who's brand-new comes into the district with just basically, just graduating college in that seat, and then they earn their master's degree while they're there, they get sort of a bonus. They, they're, and, and it's, it's in part working with the unions around that as well. So yes, we do have that.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I want to say I appreciate how much strategic planning is going on while you are grabbing for money all the time. But, um, the report card, what do we say to people that talk about the D? And I, you know, you addressed that some, but I'd like to hear a little bit more about the unfairness that Mary Ronan called the report card that failed.
Speak to the D, you talked about the graduation. And that, that's me, that's the goal of a four, somebody graduates in four years. That does not count, we are allowed to educate our special needs kids until they're twenty-two.
Yeah.
And that does not address our students with a second language and our SLS kids coming in. That, that really ruins us. And also the third grade reading guarantee. We may have ninety-eight kid, ninety-eight percent of the kids that pass it, but we're not graded on that. We're graded only on the paperwork that's filed for improvement plans.
Yes.
That's not where we guard.
And that's true, and that's a whole lot of detail. It's really, really complex, but I want to say one simple thing.
Meant to make you look bad.
When you think about the number, we, we have, I'll tell you, I am probably the calmest board member that we have.
That's true.
Yes.
But I'm not.
And, and, and that's what I bring, I balance both, you know. But I will tell you that I lost it in one of our public forums because one of our candidates stood up and ta, talked to people about our failing schools and said, "Here's the ranking, it's on the ODE website, we're number five hundred and seventy-something out of six hundred." I lost it. And I said, "You cannot measure apples and oranges and peaches and strawberries in the same barrel." What happens when you mix all that fruit? You get mixed fruit, it might taste good for the moment, but after two days, it's not very good. So you have to measure, you have to compare apples and apples, right? The way the state report card works and is measured by all these indicators as part of the improvement, whatever Sue said, whatever, uh, she said, but, and I don't know that level of detail. I will tell you this, the formula for how the scorecard is developed is based on your property wealth.
That's right.
And Cincinnati Public is considered a wealthy district. We have eighty-five percent free and reduced lunch. But we are a wealthy district. That's how they measure us. So that D, and, and this is not only an issue for us. I represent the district on the Ohio School Board Association's Board of Trustees. This is a common theme across the state, primarily for large urban districts. Because we are by far lower in terms of numbers than a lot of the rural areas and a lot of the other wealthy areas. We cannot be compared to a district that's rich and we has fifteen hundred students. So that's, but when somebody asks you, just acknowledge. Just say, "Yeah, we got a D." However, let me tell you about the things that are going well. Usually people listen to that because they don't know. And we're trying, I mean, what we did when the report card came out, yes, it was on the news, but what followed that was information that came out that detailed everything about that report card, so people could actually see. And it's, it's on our website, if you want to go to the website, and we talk about it all the time.
Um, I, I want to add, you know, this rating of schools is, is a, it's a modern idea. And it's, it came in conjunction with the charter school privatization movement.
And the vilification of teachers. And the vilification of teachers.
And the vilification of teachers is part of it. It's all part, I, I, I don't like to say conspiracy.
It is.
Bottom line, it is. It is all part of a, of a, um, effort. And it's been successful of convincing people certain schools are failing. If you can convince enough people that the schools are failing, then they'll start looking for charters and, um, for homeschooling. They'll do all kinds of things, they'll go to parochial schools, they'll do all kinds of things.
They try to justify school payovers.
And so this whole thing about grading districts, it's all about convincing people that the school's failing in spite of the evidence.
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
So Dick Galloway is gonna be, Dick Galloway is gonna be here right after, uh, the election, the first two seats after, uh, after the election. He is going to be talking about dark money.
Yeah.
Everything we're talking about here, charters, Teach for America, the vilification of teachers, it's all funded by dark money. Because all of a sudden, a group of wealthy people said, "Ooh, look, education. Look at all that money out there, we want some."
That's right.
That's where it's all coming from, it's dark money. That's where it's all coming from, it's dark money. And it's a very well-conceived plan, and they're winning in some times, in some places. With Betsy DeVos, they're even winning a little bit more.
I hope that woman never comes to Cincinnati, I'll be at the front line.
You got that right.
Thank you. I do, I do have my sheet, if anybody who doesn't, if you just want one, you're welcome to take one. And also, if you're willing to put a yard sign, I brought a few yard signs as well. Thank you.
Again, thank you, Carolyn, for being with us today. I have a suggestion that 10 years ago, I started working with the first-class high schools here in town. And I've watched them go from 12 student graduates to 100 student graduates in a year. Amazing progress in really taking kids that other people couldn't, wouldn't, or what, whatever, and these kids, it's really a nice thing to see, so. I like what's being done with some of the alternative kids, it's just part of it. Glorify it any day of the week.
That was the foundation for the construction of the preschool through 12th school at Euler. So those kids would then graduate, and they're graduating. Same thing with River Dewey, because of those neighborhoods, people wanted their kids close. So they have kept it preschool through 12th in both of those locations, and they're graduating their kids, and they never have graduated before. So Cincinnati is doing some great things, understanding their communities and understanding their people.
I personally have been part of having a student who is, what is that noise?
Got it.
There was a student who wanted to be dancing with the London Ballet. He got his, he got a diploma from our school, I was really pleased.
He's my favorite baby doll, he's still dancing with the London Ballet. Bring the ballerina.
Next week, next week, we have Erica Underwood is coming. And the week after that is graduate.
It's a week off.
It isn't a week off, everybody's going to be in some location somewhere.
We need her on the mic, she's back out there.
Okay. Dick Galloway, Dick Stroud, we've got some wonderful things coming up. And somewhere on next week, we're going to have a piece for you. Who wants, get some of you older people, it's going abroad. Everyone want to travel, we'll, we've got a program here that'll send you abroad for a couple of years. So keep coming back, because we've got some exciting things for you. So keep on coming back. Next week, Erica Underwood, and then we have voting. Make sure you give your $2 to the... Oh, and the lead. Lots of votes, anybody need to vote or die? Vote or die. Thank you. Have a wonderful week. Thank you for coming.